Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by the man with the magic wand. He's been real busy, you're gonna learn about it soon, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad to hear again today.
We are, we're also excited to have Julie and Colin with us today. Hey guys.
Hi everyone.
How you doing everybody?
So today we are going to be going over a lot. So you may have heard that we have a brand new feature that will help you get your new website up beautifully. And almost done, you're gonna maybe want to make a couple of little edits. But you're gonna be able to get that done in minutes, not hours, minutes. We're gonna do a deeper dive on that next week, but Greg is going to to share with us how to access that feature. Start playing around with it now. And we are going over our done for you content. A few months back, we started offering done for you content for young living brand partners to send out quick little tips that link to product, talk about how to use product in a way that is effective for both leads and customers. So you get some education in there, you get some curiosity and hopefully some clicks and purchases. We're gonna get into what that content looks like, how to use it and more. We're gonna pop out a video, get into our slides for today. And then we will get this show on the road. Again, welcome. So excited to have you guys here today. All right. You have to forgive me, I am not on my typical device and Zoom looks a little different from me. All right, here we go. I've got it. All right. So yeah, again, welcome. Today, we're gonna talk about our done for you content for June. We are in the month of May now, it's getting close to time to update this funnel for you. So we're gonna talk about those weekly wellness tips that we've created and how you can plug them in. And today as a bonus, we're also gonna talk about how we can adapt them to your market and how you want to use them. So today we are gonna hear from Greg about this really cool feature. This is your website done in just a few minutes. We're gonna talk about the Tip Tuesday funnel and how it works, how to claim yours, keep it updated, and how to make adjustments based on your location and the season, right? So if you are in the Southern Hemisphere, you want to know how, if it's June and it's summer here in the US, but it's June and it's winter for you in Australia, we've got you covered here today. Or if you want to maybe also learn about how to use ChatGPT to do what I do to create these for you, you're gonna see that workflow here on today's call. And then as always, we'll get into live help and Q and A. So if you have questions, please do go ahead and add those to the Q and A here on our live call. Throughout the call, we are here to help you whether your questions pertain to today's topic or not. If you'd like to join us on a live call in the future, we would love for you to do that. Go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. We're live every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time, unless it's a holiday or convention. Now, if you'd like to work together on a call like this one, we do reserve the second half of these calls for that very purpose. So you can go to getoiling.com/webstatereview. And this is a place where you can reserve time in the second half of one of these upcoming calls. And then finally, if you would like to have our team do the work for you, you can have that done too. Head over to getoiling.com/conceierge from VA services all the way through to building out your member vaults or the dream website that you want, our team can do it for you. So go over there and learn more about them and schedule a no obligation conversation. Greg, let's kick it over to you. Let's take a quick look at this awesome feature that you've been so busy building.
Yeah, sure. So let me see here and I get my screen share going. I think I've got the right one. And now is that the right thing here? Apparently it did the whole screen. Let's try this again. There, okay, I think we got it. Yeah, so we have a cool new feature called Quick Setup. It's for setting up your website in just a few minutes. Now, just for some context, I'm sure most of you are aware, not, you know, there are the built in website themes that come with Get Oiling, you don't necessarily need to do this. But if you're on a plan, basic and higher, and you've been struggling with getting your website built or knowing what to put where, how to structure the pages, or which pages to pull together to put on a website to make a theme, we've got you covered here now. So there is a new quick setup link here in the menu that walks you through setting up a website, actually creates the content and writes some of the content for you based on what you tell your, say that your business is about. So I've got a test account here with some, you know, test photo, test logo. Basically, the first thing we do is if you haven't set this up, you can choose your photo, you know, choose from what you've got there, that puts your logo in there and pick the font and body text. Now, this first page here, let me tell you this, so like if you have an existing website and you don't want to replace it, this first screen totally works for you. You can come in here, you can change your photo logo and change your fonts and colors. Those all change, you know, those are all available, you know, and they're customize my site colors and fonts and kind of in those two areas. So but this kind of centralizes those main ones. Now, the font browser in this feature is a lot better. It is, it does show all the fonts, you can just scroll through them and it actually shows you what the fonts look like. They load as you go, so they may be a little, you know, as your computer kind of loads the fonts, it'll, it'll show you. But you have a nice preview of them right here and you can search and browse and, you know, for different categories. But, you know, for example, if I pick this one, you know, it's all, anyway, well, I'll just go with that one. So we've got two different distinct fonts, so we can see the difference here between the two. You can choose your color for your link, the hover color for the link. Obviously, you have some interesting colors you've chosen on this test account, but you want to put your brand colors in here. And then you've got your button color, like default and secondary. So like there's a main button and a secondary button color. So pretty simple, put in your brand fonts, colors, logos. And then the magic happens here kind of on this next step, that was just kind of the foundation. So here, you'll probably recognize some of these website themes from creating pages in the page builder. This, this allows you to choose from, I think we've got nine of them right now, nine different website themes that you can pick from that are supported here with this new quick setup tool. So basically, you can pick, pick them, pick one of them. So I'll pick this one here and it asks you what pages you want to include on your site. Now, not all the themes include all the pages, but they all at least include a homepage and a link in bio. Cause some of the pages are one page websites. So they don't really need to have a separate about or products and services because they're all just on one big site. So that'll, you know, if you see, like if I click on this one, for example, it just goes down to those two. So I'll do this one here. So it makes a home about products and services and link on bio page. At this point, you just have to tell a little bit about what your business does now. And who you serve, if you have anything, you know, in particular that you're doing, if you have any, you know, special pre downloads or any of that, you can just kind of tell it what you have going on with your business. And you can be simple or you can be very detailed. I'm just gonna take this example right here. I help new moms build a fulfilling life with the, their new, oops. New baby. Okay, cool. And if you do this, so it does have kind of, you know, it does have the essential oil tilt to it. So if you don't want it to mention essential oils, just say, please don't mention, you know, any young living products. Otherwise, it probably will. So I'm just gonna hit next step and it's gonna generate some content for you. You can change these, this is just kind of the foundation of what you have here. So it comes up with a headline for you, sub headline, and maybe, you know, just an idea for a product or service name. And you can change these, you don't have to do this, you can see this one does mention young living in here. So if you can modify that or just, you know, better yet, tell it not to do that up here. And then it will, we'll do that. So you can look at this, modify it if you want to. Now, if you want to also, so I have a links page selected here, the link in bio page. And that's useful if you have, you know, like an Instagram account or social media accounts that you put a link in there that people can click on to go see what you're up to. And most links pages, if you've ever used like a link tree, they're just basically they have your photo at the top and then a bunch of buttons that go to different places. Well, here's a quick and easy way for you to set this up. You can absolutely do that, you know, like if I put in here, I'm just gonna put in here. I'll just put in, you know, a couple links so you have an idea of how this works. And you can add more if you want to add them more for, more than just four, you can hit add. Then you can add up to 10 here, but you can add more in the page builder if you want to, because this does create pages. If you have them put in your social media accounts, do that here or leave them blank if you don't have them. You don't have to do this. And then there's an option here if you want to choose the fonts that you have or use the website theme fonts. Cause every website, every website theme, if I scroll back up here, you can see it has these, like if I zoom in here, you can see this one has a couple specific fonts that are different than this one, that are different than this one. But if you want to use the brand fonts, which I probably recommend, because you just picked that on the previous screen, just leave it selected now. So here's where the real magic happens. So I'm gonna hit create my site. And it gives you a little alert just to confirm it because it takes a minute. Now, right now, it's going out there and writing copy for your website and assembling the pages and putting them together. So it's gonna make, is I think I picked the theme that had four pages, it's gonna be making four pages that it need, you know, so like a homepage about page services and like, so the website's done, you know, took 10 seconds, whatever, now I'm just gonna go ahead and view it. And I'll show you what it put together. So, and of course, this is all editable. So you don't have to do this, it basically fills in the copy, you can swap out the photos in the editor. And this is, this will be part of the deep dive next week on how to customize this. But you can see it's puts the page together and uses your fonts and your colors for the buttons and the links and, you know, the uses your headline font and all that. So, and that's the homepage, you can see the about page, click over here. On the about, you can see it's created that page too, even writes a big story about you and you can modify this, you know, if it's, if it's accurate or not accurate, you know, it's just sort of writing fill that there. And yeah, anyway, and then here's a services page that it also created, showing you the different services that you might have. And of course, you can adapt this to what you would be doing, what you actually do if it's not right. And then finally, here's a links page where it just shows, and most of the time links pages are seen on a mobile device. So they wouldn't be quite this stretched out, but they would look like, you know, so this, this would be something you'd share on Instagram, for example, or somebody's most likely tapping through on their phone. So they'll just have your photo, a headline, you can obviously change this. And then it's got the links here that you have along with a nice little footer. And then there is a contact button here too, if you need it, it pops up a little box where it fills out your contact information. And then, or people can fill out their contact information and then send you a message. So that's what it does, it puts it together all in about, you know, what does that take to fill out the form? And type a little bit about your business, you know, maybe get it done in about 10 minutes, you have a nice website. And then all the pages show up back over here. And actually, I probably could, I could have just clicked those links there, I missed that where it says, you know, here's, here's the links to edit the pages, but they do show up in your page builder. So like if I want to go and edit the homepage, I can just come in here and okay, I want to change this to something else. I certainly can edit it, hit done, it changes it out. So anyway, that's where the deep dive comes in, I just wanted to show you the overview of that today. And so you can have, you know, start playing around with it. Again, that's under the quick website menu here over in the, or quick setup under the website menu. If you want to try that out. One note, if you do have an existing website, it does, so it'll add pages to your account. So you do have to have room to have the extra pages. And then it will replace your menu, it currently will replace your menu with these four links or however many pages that you have selected. So if you have a custom menu, probably want to take note of that. Or, you know, somehow save those if you've got links and all that, so you don't have to, you'll have to breathe, add them back in there once it's all done. So anyway, hopefully, a lot of you get to try this out and send us feedback. We're looking to improve this to make it even easier for people that want a custom site. So if you have any thoughts or feedback, anything, certainly let me know. Back to you, Ashley.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Greg. This is such an exciting feature and you guys, we are gonna do a full deep dive on this next week. We're gonna go through the entire workflow process. So as you noticed, there are preset images. We're gonna talk about what it looks like to go into Canva, I'll provide some templates for you and to come prepared, right? So what kind of images do you need? What kind of, you know, copy do you need to more or less have prepared in terms of what you've put into the AI prompt there? So if you want to learn how to use this in depth, we're gonna get into it in a dedicated sense on next week's call. So yeah, again, guys, just all the flowers for Greg here. How cool is that feature, right? Okay, so moving back to today's topic, we're getting into our done for you content that we release every single month to help you keep your audience fed with tips from you that help to gently introduce young living products. So let's talk about how this works and what it does for you, right? So this is our Tip Tuesday funnel. If you guys are using it, actually pop your hand up if you're using the, the weekly wellness tips, the Tip Tuesday funnel. If you are providing this to your customers or using it as a base for your newsletters, let us know, pop your hand up. Excited if you are not yet using it for you to learn how to do that here today. So, so yeah, let's get into this. So how this helps you grow? So really importantly, when you connect with people, they aren't necessarily ready to learn about young living or to say yes to young living right away. It often takes quite a few points of contact to get somebody to the point where they say, hey, you know what? I'm ready to try that thing you showed me, right? So they need ongoing education and exposure. And as you likely know, this is also true for somebody who said yes to young living. For them to be open to more products, we need to be consistently showing up and giving them those touchpoints that relate products to things that they're interested in. And so those customers need guidance on their journey and this provides those small actionable steps. And it helps leads to slowly gradually get exposed without, without being salesy or pushy, right? So we've got consistent touchpoints that build trusted engagement over time. And these products, young living products are introduced in a natural contextual way along with wellness topics that are seasonal and relevant. And it makes it easy for your leads to take the next step. And it works like this, we have a landing page that is already made, you don't have to change it. It invites them to sign up on your website to get your weekly wellness tips. When they do, and they opt in on that landing page, they're gonna get a confirmation message. And then they are going to start receiving emails the next Tuesday, right? So no immediate email is sent, these weekly emails are gonna start the next Tuesday. This is a date based campaign and I have them set up month by month by month. And that means that you don't really have to fuss and fool around with how these emails go out. Now, the last week of each month, you need to go in and update the campaign for the following month, right? So right now, you might have this landing page that has the Tip Tuesday campaign for May, right? And so that is right now sending out to your people on Tuesdays. But if you want it to go out to anyone who signs up new in June, then the last week of this month, you're gonna want to swap out this campaign. And I'll show you how to do that here today. So managing this is really simple. The last week of every month, you're gonna swap out the campaign on the landing page and then filter your leads for weekly wellness tips. Or if you're using a different tag for this on your landing page, whatever that tag is. And then you're going to apply the next month's campaign. So in this case, you would be applying the June campaign to people that are tagged with weekly wellness tips. So when people enter their name and email on that landing page, they're getting this tag in your contact manager. And so if you want those people to continue receiving June's tips, July, all the way through, because we're doing this every month, you're gonna want to do this once a month, just make this quick, quick update. Let's talk a little bit about what is in your Tip Tuesday emails this month. Week one, we're talking about staying hydrated and boosting electrolytes. We're talking about hydration in warmer months and simple ways to support hydration beyond just drinking water. So this creates a really great opportunity to introduce Ningsha Red. And I've also got mineral essence in here as well. The second week, we're talking about sun care, skin protection. Here we are talking about supporting skin before and after sun exposure. Great topic for summer here in the Northern Hemisphere. We're gonna talk about plant based ingredients and we're featuring lavender and carrot seed oils. In week three, we are talking about energizing summer activities, maintaining energy levels. So we're talking about Ningsha Nitro here, peppermint essential oil. Really great options here to introduce during summer. And then week four, we're talking about cooling aromatherapy and summer diffuser blends. And here we're gonna be bringing up spearmint and citrus fresh. Now, these are all coded to you, to your account. If you are in the US, I am going to be showing you here today how you can make changes to this. If you, let's just say, for instance, your winter is June, right? So if you're in Australia, New Zealand, et cetera, or if you are in a different market, right? So if you need non-US product links or as Desiree just mentioned, translating this to another language. So let's go and get into that, I'm actually gonna show you the steps to follow here. Beginning with grabbing your, your resource bundle from the blog post that we, we have here for you. So let me, let me just switch my share up here and I'll show you how to claim this bundle. And then we're gonna work through how you can modify it. That is not the share that I was looking for, bear with me for just a moment. I want this one. Perfect. Okay. I believe this is it. Okay, cool. Got it. So what we need to do is go right over here to the Get Oiling blog. This is an email you would have received this morning and you'll be getting another one if you are on the list this afternoon. But this blog post here, June 2025, weekly wellness tips. You're gonna see a full walkthrough of exactly what to do if you want to grab the resource bundle. You want to learn about what's in it, you want to see screenshots of exactly what steps you need to do to update your existing campaigns and landing pages. This is all here for you and ready here. Now, one of the things that I have added here for this month is a discussion on how we can go about adjusting the use of these campaigns based on where you are in the world. So for example, again, if you are in the US, if you're in Canada, if you're in parts of Europe, for instance, you're going to see that being in, being in the Northern Hemisphere, this content is going to be seasonally appropriate for you. You may just want to change the language or change the product links. But if this is your winter right now, if we're going into your winter, then it's going to be important for you to make some significant adjustments. And moving forward, as we release more of this monthly content, you'll actually be able to go back and say, for instance, you know, next June, you could actually grab our December campaign, right? And next January, or sorry, next July, you would grab our January campaign. But, but since we aren't a full year into creating this content, I did go ahead and create a resource bundle for you guys. If you are in Australia, New Zealand, et cetera, if you're in the Southern Hemisphere and you want a winter centric campaign this month, this is here for you, all right? So do grab that if you need it. But let me pop right up here, this is our June resource bundle for the Northern Hemisphere, which is going to be the, the default here in most cases. So I'm gonna grant permission for Get Oiling to, to see that I claimed this and I'm going to claim the bundle. Now, what this is going to look like, I'm gonna walk you through the very quick steps here. Obviously, if you need to edit the campaign, those are the, that's what you want to do next. But in the event that you don't need to, let's go and do the quick steps to swap this out. And then I'll show you actually how to make those edits. Now, remember, you do want to make sure that you are doing this after the final Tuesday of the month you're in. So right now, it's May 22nd, right? Now, I don't have my calendar pulled up, I think I can though. So next Tuesday, there is another email that's going out, right? If you're, if you're currently using the May campaign that we gave you, you want to wait until next Wednesday to do what I'm about to show you, right? So on the 28th would be the soonest you would want to follow the step here. So here's what I'm gonna do, I've got my Tip Tuesday email. You've got plenty of time to make edits to this campaign before you go and follow these steps that I'm about to show you. So we're gonna go to our landing pages and we're gonna find our Tip Tuesday landing page. I'm gonna type in tip and find that here, here we go. And I'm going to go into the settings. And again, don't do this today, do this next week. I'm gonna type in June and there's my campaign. I am going to go right over here and let me change these things on my screen here all quick. I'm gonna click done, I'm gonna click save and we're halfway done, almost there. Now, I'm going to go to my contacts. And this is actually a step that you can do right away. Just don't be like, don't wait to change the, the landing page until next Tuesday. But right now, I can go filter my contacts for my weekly wellness tips tag. And then I can come right over here and I can apply the campaign. So I'm gonna go to bulk contact actions and I'm gonna type in June in campaigns, there it is. And I'm gonna go ahead and apply that. Now, again, this isn't going to start sending until the first Tuesday in June. So let me come right back over here and show you, let me go to June. And we can go look at what's inside this campaign and how it's set up. So you can see here that these start sending on June 2nd, which means that our day one is June 3rd. And so these are already set up to send. Now, I have these set up to send at 9:00 AM Central Time. Obviously, for your market, you may choose to change this time based on what's appropriate for you. If you are in, I did check this for Australia this morning. If you're in Australia, you can actually keep the default time, which is 5:00 PM Central US Time, because that's gonna send in the morning for your contacts, right? But if you're in Europe, you're gonna want to change this, just depending on the market that you're in, you might want to make those adjustments. I like to send these in the morning personally, but there's certainly no harm in sending at a different time of day. Now, I want to get into showing you two things really quickly. If you are in the Northern Hemisphere and all you want to do is change the language or change the, the link to the product that you're using, let me show you how to do that here real quick. Now, first things first, obviously, if you're wanting to translate this, if you are a fluent speaker, highly recommend that you actually translate this in your own colloquial dialect, right? I think that that's really important. I think that a lot of, a lot of online translators can translate technically correctly, but I think that they can sound a little robotic or miss certain things in translation. So there's only four emails here. You could certainly take all of this content, type it into an online translator and then you can go back and make those adjustments in that language as you see fit. And that's actually a pretty easy step here, right? And you could maybe go to ChatGPT for this, or I think translate.google.com, it's free, it's easy. And it is again, technically accurate, but it doesn't necessarily convey the sort of colloquialisms and things like that, that you might want to be using in your language. Now, if you want to change the link that you're using, what we're doing here is we're using a leaf link, right? So these are leaf links where we connect, so in this case Ningsha Red Mineral Essence. We are using the leaf link, which is right here. And essentially what you do is you take your young living product link from your market and you paste that in here. And because when you signed up for Get Oiling, you gave us your Young Living member number, it's going to automatically add that to the link. So let's just say, for instance, you are, let's gonna go, let's go to Young Living and I will use, let's see, I'll, I'll use Canada, right? So here's Canada, English, and I'm gonna go up here and what, what were my products here again? I've got Ningsha Red and Mineral Essence. So I'm gonna type in Ningsha Red. And I'm gonna use these singles because we're talking about summer and being on the go. So I'm actually gonna grab this link here and I'm going to go up here and copy it. And then I'm gonna come right back over here to this screen and paste that in. Click okay, and you can actually see wherever, here we go, this, this is the link. I'm actually going to grab it and copy and then delete it because I don't want it right there. But I can come right down here to where it says Ningsha Red and I'm just gonna swap this link out. And you can see here that it's gonna automatically include that Young Living member number that you gave us when you signed up. So you can just repeat. And of course, if you're going from our blog post, you can go ahead and grab these links ahead of time if you want to bulk this process out. And you can actually see all of the products that we're linking to in this campaign. I believe they're the same, I'm just contextualizing the tips a little differently, right? So week one, two, three, four, you've got the, the products are listed, right? So if you wanted to adjust what you're recommending, change the products, et cetera, you'll actually see it all in the blog post before even having to go in and edit each of these individual messages. Okay, but that's the basic, simple step that you can follow. If you want to change out the links for your market. Again, you do want to make sure that you are going to your market, right? So this is, you know, Canada, English, if you are in Singapore, if you're in Indonesia, if you're in New Zealand, whatever that looks like, you just have to make sure that you are grabbing the products for the market that you are primarily operating in. And then when you plug those into the leaf link, you'll get the link, the special link for you. And then you're just gonna swap it out by clicking, going to edit and then pasting that URL in right here in this field. And that's going to allow you to send this email out, not just to your customers, but also to your leads who, when they click on this link in their email, if they decide to go ahead and purchase those single packets of Ningsha, that's going to become your new customer, right? They'll be signing up with you when they do that. Now, I want to walk you through basically how I do this, right? And how you can take this content and really do whatever you want with it, okay? So what that's going to look like, and I'm actually gonna show you my own process utilizing ChatGPT. And I'm going to show you how to make your life really easy with this. Now, here's what I do, I'm gonna go into code view. So I want this same formatting, the way that this is set up in all of the emails that I create, right? So I'm gonna give it an example. And I want to be able to copy and paste code so that I don't have to go in and redesign every email to make sure it looks the way that I want it to. So I'm gonna go into code view here and I'm gonna select all, I'm using Command A on a Mac. I'm using Command A on a Mac, you could do Control A on a PC. I'm going to go Command C or Control C. Now that I've got it copied, I'm going to go over to Chat GPT and I'm going to show you how to make some modifications or even create something entirely new using this system. So bear with me just a second. I'm going to share multiple screens here and show you how to get this done. Here we go. Okay, all right. So I have a Chat GPT screen open and I have a Get Wayling dashboard open here. So I'm actually going to go and show you under campaigns. I'm going to go find my June campaign and I'm going to duplicate it. So maybe I want to do this for the southern hemisphere. So here, I've got the messages that are in the campaign already. And and because I, well, actually, I want to, I want to duplicate that. I don't want to change it for me. You, you could just take it and and change it and make it your own, right? So there's the campaign, I think it's just going to go straight to opening it. Here we go, copy campaign. All right, so I'm going to call this June twenty twenty five, Southern Hemisphere. Okay, so I'll say, okay. There we go. So I've got that copied. Now I'm going to come over here to Chat GPT and I am going to prompt it. So I'm going to say, I would like the copy of this email changed to reflect tips and product recommendations. Let's see, tips and product recommendations for residents of the southern hemisphere in June. So the current copy reflects June being summer. But here it is winter. All right, this is the copy. Provide Edit in the same format. All right, and now I'm going to hit Command or Control V to paste. And you don't even have to worry about all of those little brackets. Don't even think about it, it's going to do it for you. I'm going to go Send. And we're going to wait for it to finish creating what it's doing. And I will need to ask it for a subject line. Oh, it's giving me multiples. I don't love it when it does that, but it's fine. I'll show you how to do it, it might do this for you too. Okay, I'm going to say, provide a compelling subject line for this email. Include Tip Tuesday. And I'm putting that line there. And I'm going to put this in quotes just to make sure that this is clear. Include Tip Tuesday in the subject line. Okay, beautiful. So I've got my subject line. I'm going to go in and I'm going to click on the first message in this campaign. And I'm going to paste. There we go, stay energized and hydrated this winter. And now I'm going to go into code view here. And I'm going to go to the top of what they've given me. I'm going to go delete everything that's there and I'm going to copy and paste. Copy again. Go to make sure you're down at the very bottom of here. Paste again. And then the final section, copy that and paste. Now let's close the code view. And we can look through here and we can see that it is the same formatting. This is great. We do need to make sure that we've got the correct links here. But take a quick look, favorite winter wellness drink, stay warm and well. That's not something you would say, stay warm to somebody in the US in June, right? But you do say that, say, in Australia or New Zealand. So let's take a look again here real quick. We need to make an adjustment to this. This does not, this is not a oh, look at that, it's actually showing the Australian link. I'm going to copy that. And what we're going to do here is use our leaf link. There it is. Paste that product. And again, we're just going to copy that URL, delete it and swap it right here. And this really is a fairly simple process, right? I just asked it to change the content for winter. You could also ask with the same thing to maybe change this to Puerto Rican Spanish, right? Whatever that looks like for you, right? Or if it's Mexican Spanish or change this to German, et cetera. And again, repeating here, we've got the link, it's already provided us with that's relevant to the Australian market. I'm going to go ahead and use that leaf link one more time. And get the link that's for this account. So again, copy, delete it. Because we don't want an ugly link, we want a pretty one. Go to Edit Link here, paste, update. And you've got one of four done and that took just a couple of minutes, right? So just remember, you can go into AI. And actually, what I just showed you, I tend to do this in bulk and sometimes I need to give it feedback if it's not doing what I want it to do. And I personally use Chat GPT to do this because I will often do multiple months of these in advance, right? But this is something that you can do and write with AI and Get Oil Ling as well, right? So maybe you want to incorporate this into your existing format that you use, right? So maybe you don't want to send our tip Tuesday emails. Maybe you want to use our tip Tuesday content to incorporate into what you're already doing. This again is another way for you to be able to say, okay, here's my newsletter, Chat GPT. This is the format. I want you to insert this into it, right? But provide it back to me in this code format, which this really is the biggest energy saver. If you're using Chat GPT or our Right With AI and Get Wayling to give you the code for this, then you're going to have to skip having to go and say, okay, well, wait, what font was that? What size was that? Is it, you know, is it paragraph heading one? Or is it normal? Or does it have color or whatever? You can keep this consistent really quickly and easily if you're going about it that way. So I hope that that was really helpful to you. And I'm going to go ahead and open up our Q and A in the chat here to see if there's any questions that we can cover. If you want to see how something else might be done with this, feel free to ask and we can take a look at it here together on this call. All right, let's see. There's a lot of clutter on this screen. I'm using a different screen here. As you can see, I'm not in my usual location. We are traveling for a wedding this weekend. All right, is it possible to translate for Dutch followers? Yes, right? So you would be able to go in. And again, potentially, I would put this into Chat GPT. I can't speak to the accuracy. If you have a favorite translator tool, then by all means, use that and then make those adjustments. All right, I see that I'm signed up to get the tips as I have the tag on myself, but I haven't been getting May. Maybe I forgot to add the campaign. So, yeah, you, there are two steps each month and we talk about that each time we do this here. So not the last Thursday of the month, but the Thursday before the last Thursday of the month, we will always talk about this, right? And so since we we got started with this, that's been the reminder, there's two steps, right? You swap it out on the landing page. And then, of course, you need to make sure that anybody who already signed up gets the new messages. That's why you filter your contacts for that tag and you apply the campaign. So there's a second step, there's two steps. Every month, you're going to swap out the campaign on the landing page and you're going to apply the new campaign to the people who already signed up by searching for that tag. You can see the screenshots of this, like the walkthrough that I just did, fully outlined on the blog post. And all you got to do is just go to our blog and look for the tip Tuesday filter and then you can find all of that content and all of the walkthroughs. Let's see, can I still claim May and send out the last week of May? Absolutely, yes, yeah, it's date based. So they won't get the first three messages, but if you apply it today, they're going to get the last one. Absolutely, because that's next Tuesday. Is there a way to have two landing pages, one for each language or have it for different signups? Yeah, Karen, if you want to offer this in different languages, you can, well, there's two ways to do this, right? You can have two, right? So maybe have an English one and a Spanish one. Or, and I've seen this done before as well, you can have one funnel, but you are including, you know, English first, Spanish second, or vice versa on the landing page and in the emails. You just want to indicate in the in the language, if you aren't starting with that language, have a line in that. So let's just say, for instance, if you're going to start with Spanish content, say at the top, you know, for English, you know, read below, right? So scroll down for for the English version of this, or you could say that in Spanish at the top, right? So you can combine these into one, you just want to make the edit to that one campaign. I think that generally speaking, it's going to be a little more effective to have two, but it is a little bit more work. So that's really just, are you, are you making the exchange for your time or for effectiveness? If you're crunched on time, then you might just combine them into one, otherwise I would go for two. Okay, went through the process to add a leaf link to the Mineral Essence and it looks like it's already a deep link pointing to Mineral Essence was my sponsor ID. Yes, if you are in the US, which you are, Alison, you don't need to make any changes to this. You just have to follow those two steps. Swap it on on the landing page, filter for your contacts, apply the campaign to those contacts. If you're in the US, this is already coded to you. I show these modifications for folks who are in Canada, in Central America, in anywhere in the world, right? Who want to use these campaigns? But the links that are in them are for the US market. So if you're in a different market, you're just going to be making a few swaps and then you're good to go. Another reason why we don't do this on the very last week of the month, this this call, I want to make sure that you guys are fully supported and you've got everything that you need in a nice full week before you would need to look at applying this campaign to your contacts. Okay, so Peg, on that same blog post where you claim the campaign, there's a link to get the landing page as well. I don't include the landing page in this bundle because it's not always necessarily clear to everyone that you can uncheck the landing page. I don't want you to have, you know, a new version of that landing page every single month, right? So there is a separate bundle link for that, it's in that same blog post. So if you haven't used this before, definitely make sure that you grab that link to the the other resource bundle that has that landing page in it. Are you using the free version of Chat GPT? I am not. I personally use the paid one because I use it pretty extensively. What I'll typically do is sit down and I'll have a workday where I am using Chat GPT to develop the stuff that I'll be using for the rest of the month or for the rest of the quarter, however, you know, whatever the project is that's being worked on. And for me, it's super, super helpful. I think that what I just showed you, you can do, like I mentioned, you can do it with our Right With AI in Get Oil Ling. It is doable that way. I will often back and forth with it though. So I just wanted to show you that since I already had it pulled up. But you can follow those same steps and write with AI and Get Oil Ling. And I think that the the free version of Chat GPT should work for what I showed you today as well. I don't recall what their specific limitations are. But but for this specific type of task, I find it really, really, really useful. Let me go and let's take a look together real quick at the blog post so I can just make sure. I believe I have a link to this. Just a second. Okay, yeah, so you know what? I need to make a modification to how I put these blog posts together just to make it a little bit more visually clear where to go get the landing page. But this one right here, if you follow the link right here, it'll take you to the very first one that we did. I will, I'll go back and modify this blog post and future ones to make sure that you can claim that landing page more easily. But if we go right over here, this is the landing page, right? So I can actually, I'll just copy this for the sake of expediency here and and I'll pop this into the chat for you guys just in case you don't have access to that yet. There we go. And definitely bookmark the blog, bookmark the Good Oil Ling blog. All of the trainings that we're doing now are actually going to be showing up here in your recent posts. It's not just the tip Tuesday content. If you want to learn about any of the topics that we've talked about in the past, easily find the resource bundles for them, you're going to find all of those here on the blog moving forward. Good, 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 yeah, great minds. Awesome. Anybody have questions or something that you would like to work on or go over together? Pop your hand up or let me know in the chat or the Q and A. And I would be more than happy to bring you out to talk about whatever you'd like to work on together. Next week, like I mentioned, we are going to be going into some detail on how to use this awesome new feature that Greg has created. So if you are someone who is interested in creating a website for the first time or you're interested in something that is, you know, newer or a bit more you, you want to play around with this feature, we're going to walk through everything and provide Canva templates for you and all the kind of good stuff that you'll need to get into implementation with this on next week's call. All right, where is my chat? Why isn't it showing it to me? Okay, perfect. Desiree, is that a request? Do, let me know if you want to, if you want me to bring you out to chat. I I'm happy to do that. Let me see, there's a landing page, awesome. Thank you, Peg. Fantastic. All right, yeah, okay, perfect, understood. That was just for next week, probably. All right, cool. So if you plan on joining us next week to explore that new feature together, maybe get your website created quickly, I would encourage you to do a couple of things to prepare. If you don't know the colors that you would like to use for your brand, definitely start thinking about what those are, right? And I'll get into some tools and stuff that you guys can can use next week. And also think about sort of what your oily angle is, right? So are you somebody who really focuses on working with new moms? Is is green living, non-toxic living, something that is a primary sort of focus or angle for you? Whatever that looks like. Be thinking about who your person is and how you want to use Young Living to help that person uniquely. Because that's really like the stuff that makes a website work is you coming into the room knowing those things, right? Who am I here for? What do I do for them, right? It's your why, it's your business why, right? It's who I help and why. And and yeah, so we're going to go into what this looks like together next week. All right, Jennifer says, I'm having trouble creating a way to have people book one on one appointments with me. I thought I did it, but I must not have done it right. Jennifer, do you want to come out and chat? Let me know, I'll pull you out, we could talk through it together. Aw, Sean, fantastic, thank you. Okay, Jennifer, I will bring you out. There we go. Hi.
Hello.
All right, so tell me about the booking that you're you're trying to get worked out here.
Well, the first one will be if somebody wants to go into my calendar and schedule a one to one with me.
Okay, okay, fantastic. And you already have your calendars connected and and a booking event set up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
All right, cool. Well, we're going to figure it out together. Okay, let me see if I can find that on my screen here. You really don't like understand how spoiled you are to a large screen until you work with one for years. Okay, here we go. There it is, okay. So we're going to go into your we're going to take a quick look here at our calendars first. Excellent, you've got that connected. We want to look at our booking types. And you've got that. Let's take a look at the booking page. And it looks like you've got availability here. Okay, so what are the errors that uh that are kind of coming up for you?
Do I need a landing page to share this for people so they could book it?
You can actually use this link right here. You can click get link. Or you could click view booking page. Now, if you are interested in having a like a a form that they fill out where maybe they answer some questions. Oh, 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 this is you're charging for this. Correct?
Ideally, yes.
Oh, okay, yeah. So then you will want to use a page for this. Um, and I actually think that we did an in-depth training on this. Um, if you go into uh the Success Academy and um live training and replays, let's view by topic. I think this is under calendar and booking. Uh, and there's a few videos there. Yeah, calendar appointments and booking. Wellness consults would be a great one, packages of calls, classes and workshops, et cetera. So I several of these are going to be helpful to you. Uh, but just to to give you a quick CliffsNotes, what you want to do is set up the page and that's right here. Uh, you want to set up the page where you are essentially selling this call. Right? Uh, so you would create the page. I would maybe use um maybe I would use a sales page of some kind. Um. Let's grab this one here. I don't know that I would necessarily use a countdown timer for this, so I can ju- just delete that section. Um, but you know, you talk about what the benefit is of the the call. Obviously, don't use this because you're offering a call unless you're only offering it for a short period of time. Um, brand the call. What are they getting for it, et cetera? You're selling something. You need to make the page sell, right? Uh, but then under settings, importantly, how you set this up is you're going to uh connect your payment processor, right? So you do need to make sure that that's done in your system first. Um, you would set up the option for payment and then um you would also then include um again here under settings. Go to leads, uh fields and booking, you would take this booking event that you already have. And you would include that here, right? So that means when they're filling out the form, they're putting their name, they're putting their email. But then they're also maybe answering questions that you're asking. Tell me more about you know, whatever this thing is that you've been dealing with, right? So if if you you want to do like an intake, you can, you know, have multiple questions here that they need to answer. And then when they um, I will go to view here. Um. When they go to fill out that form and proceed. They'll be able to pick their call time, their date and time, they'll fill out the form and then uh payment would be completed here as well if you have your payments enabled uh in your Good Oiling account.
I haven't done that yet.
Yeah, so once you have that done, you can go to uh you can create a page, you know, you can use a template like this one, you can. I I think if you're selling, you know, a a a call at that price point, I don't think you necessarily need as as long of a page as is offered here. So you could delete some sections if you'd like or use a a simpler starting point from here. Uh, but the first thing you're going to want to make sure that you do is connect payments uh that that would be with Stripe. And then um then you would actually set up payment on a page form and include the calendar. And you can, I I would in this case maybe have the calendar below the form. Um, because you want them to fill out the form, get those answers, you know, putting their payment information and then select their date. Um. Not scientific, you could obviously choose to go a different direction with that. But uh but yeah, that's that's how you would offer that uh to sell.
Can I check? Does Stripe work for the United Kingdom?
I don't, no way it wouldn't. Um, team thoughts?
I haven't used it.
Um, I don't know, Julie calling Greg? Do you guys?
It looks like it does. I did a quick Google search. Um. You could search for Stripe supporter company or countries. Uh, I believe it is. Let me see. It's forty-six countries, so hopefully.
Okay.
Yes, it shows that on the supported list, so that should work.
Great, thank you.
Hey Greg, while you're there, is Netherlands on there? Oh, great. Awesome. Yes, okay, so Desiree.
The link in there has the countries, yep.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Yeah, so that that should work there. Uh, and that's stripe.com/go-global. Correct, Greg? Put that into the chat. Um. If you guys want to look that up there, um. Fantastic, yeah. So um so yeah, you'll you'll be able to to create it that way and um if you are in a market that uh doesn't support Stripe or if you have other preferred payment options, you could also just basically go and grab uh that initial link that I was showing Jennifer here under booking types. Wherever you're taking payment, uh so if it's PayPal or whatever your preferred uh one is, you're just going to send them to this link, right? Where it says view booking page or get link, either of these. Copy this uh the link from here or from your um your browser up here and then put that into wherever they go after they purchase. So when you're setting up in some kind of a um a payment portal, um they will often have like a, you know, a specification where what are we sending them after they purchase? That's what you would send them is a link to this. So if you are in a situation where Stripe maybe isn't an option or it's not your preferred option, then you could do that as well. So I I hope that helps, Jennifer.
Thank you. That's great.
Excellent.
I have work to do.
Don't we all? All right, let me see. There's another question here we're going to get to before uh we move on for the week. All right, Karen says, how do you add Amazon Stripe to a landing page? I'm not familiar with that. I think um Stripe can display a couple of different like ways to pay, but I'm not familiar with utilizing Amazon payments. I if if that's something that you are really intent on using, you could create a payment link through any payment portal and uh and 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 basically create a button on whatever page that you have that goes there to check out. Um, if you wanted to go outside of our system, just make sure that you're connecting the destination, which again, in 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 a case like Jennifer's or potentially yours, if you're trying to do the same. Um, make sure that they're being sent that link where they can take advantage of what they purchased. All right, where do previous unclaimed bundles live? So they live wherever they were shared. Um. You're going to find as a practice moving forward, um anytime we have a done-for-you resource, that's going to be tagged as a done-for-you resource on our blog. So whether that's these Tip Tuesdays or anything else that we share that includes a resource bundle, um you'll be able to find it easily that way. But um in terms of stuff from further back, uh you can go to our um Success Academy, uh click on the um trainings and replays and then for whatever topic you're looking for, if it has a a resource bundle, it's going to be in the description of that YouTube video. Uh, now your previously claimed resource bundle, if you claimed a resource bundle and you're trying to find it, um, you know, or or something that was in it, that's going to be down here um under resource bundles in your content library. And um anything that you claimed, so right here, if I go to my claimed. You'll be able to see any of the bundles that you did uh claim previously. Okay, uh it's like Amazon affiliate and not a payment portal. Oh, oh, got you. So if you are an Amazon affiliate and you would like to uh to show uh products that you recommend from Amazon on your website, quite often, uh a a platform like that that you're an affiliate for will provide you code that you can embed on a website. So let's just say, for instance, you want to have maybe a carousel of your Amazon storefront or something like that. Um, in your backend tools with Amazon, you should actually have code that you can copy and paste into your website. And essentially what you would be doing is going to a page and very much like I was showing you uh in the editing of the emails, you switch to a code viewer and then you paste in the code that's provided and you now have that in that section. And so that makes it a little bit easier, uh you know, for you to just display what that looks like. Um. So yeah, if it's not a payment portal, then really what you're doing is you are linking to the thing. So you could take the images from Amazon and put those onto a page, um paste anywhere. So no, um what you would be doing, Karen, is um here, bear with me for just a second. Let me get um out of Jennifer's account. I don't want to get into her stuff here. Um, but essentially what you're going to be doing is uh and we have a training on like a favorites page. We also have a template for a favorites page. Highly recommend that, but if you just go into pages, um here we go, go into pages. And I'm going to click add to create a new one. Here's on my favorite things page. I will use this one as a template and this this actually would kind of take the place of say like a like an Amazon storefront or something like that. Um, where you can say, you know, this category, that category, the other, and then have it jump down the page to the um to the section that that person is looking for, uh whatever they're shopping for. So here you would swap out the image from Amazon. You would put the description in here, um maybe again from Amazon, maybe it's a little bit of your own take on the product. And then this is where you would put a link to the affiliate product. Now, if you wanted to maybe put in, again, if they're providing you code for something a bit more significant, say it's you know, like I mentioned, an example, like a carousel or like a large section for your website where you can uh display your Amazon store. You would just add a one-column, no header section like this one here. Go into edit content. And again, just like we did with that code viewer previously, here, let me do this so it opens up in the wider screen. There we go. Uh, click the three dots where it says more miscellaneous, click code view. And then you're just going to replace right here where you see inside the brackets here. You're going to replace this with the the uh code that they provide you. Right? And then that, obviously I don't have any to paste here uh to demonstrate, but that is where you would actually find that. Oh, yeah, no. So if you have a banner um that you want to use, you could incorporate that into a section of your website. So in that case, I might not make it its own section. I might, depending on how big it is, right? Um. But yeah, you could absolutely incorporate that. You could even put that into um those banners you can incorporate into your blog copy as well. You just need to click the three dots and go into code view and you can paste that code in wherever you like it. Another really fun sheet code, if you're a little afraid of code and where you want it to go, is to go where you want something to show up. So maybe I I want it to show up right here. And pretend like you're adding video. And it's going to show you this option to embed code and then paste the code that it gives you right here. Just pretend like it's a video with an embed code and you can paste that code that you get from wherever right there and it'll show up in the place that you want it. So if you're a little nervous, you want to put it in an existing section, but you're afraid of going into the the code editor, which is totally reasonable as a fear to go in and mess something up like that, uh you can use that trick to do it. All right, thank you guys so much uh for being here and uh taking up this uh this time and space uh with us to work on your business. I hope you guys have a great Memorial Day weekend uh here in the U S and wherever you are in the world. I hope that you are um having a great day and we'll have a great weekend and we'll be back here same time next week to really dive into that quick start feature. Have a great week, everybody.